I just feel like.
Yes, a little. Yeah, I was, um, I went up to Ox Springs and see if the. For the river and quite some.
Oh, yeah, they might.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
So.
And I always say. Thinking and looking at it and thought of.
Yeah.
A couple of years in the same mountain.
Where is it?
Well, hills.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Right.
But I could never. Go. They wanted.
Sure.
That's a good point.
I, I. We got, um, you guys, we can't say that's what the. Oh, yeah. I thought there was something my wife. Okay.
Great. Thanks.
I'll get the bag out of the way. Yes, that's okay. Yes, Dana, nice to meet you, buddy.
Nice to meet you too.
Um, they gotta go in.
That's convincing.
And then.
That's the lyrics. One. And so. One, yeah. It's a good, awesome. I've got to take her. Park. Be the last.
Who's the baby?
No.
Well.
Yes.
Like the.
Father.
Yeah, they. The man wants to take two. You know, they're kind of. My name is. Oh, wait. I drive down the road. Joe on one side.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, yeah. Well, but. And a lot more. Yeah. Well, I love it. More. Thank you. I always got a lot of money. It's like, well, yeah. And I've learned much from it. Well, also. People. Sort of like.
Yes. Yeah. That's the lover. Like a spillover community.
Yeah. Anyway, I, I. Kind of ask us.
Sure.
So.
Right.
Now. Anything. They were out. And then.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's. And then Carol Rangers.
Yeah. But you, yeah, I liked it. That's why I. Mine is. And wood. Cotton.
The silver twixt. Yeah. If I bring them in.
Turn.
They were.
Thank. Thank.
Folks, I've got six o'clock according to Siri. So we'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. If you would please rise and join, join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could do the roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dan Hahn.
Present.
Councilmember Melinda Cox.
Present.
Councilmember Julia Stubel, also present. Councilmember Josh Hahn.
I am here.
Mayor White.
Also present.
You have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. We will dive right into our new and only business for tonight, which is getting to know all of you candidates. So first, let me start with saying thank you, not just for being here, but thank you for being willing to serve our community in this way. We all really appreciate that. Uh, I'll also say, if you're feeling a little bit nervous right now, also understand, all of us totally get it. Uh, so I hope that helps you put, but yeah, we've all been there. Uh, we hope that helps you put your nerves at rest for that. The way this is going to flow tonight is we've got a series of questions uh, that we as council members submitted to Rochelle uh, and got consolidated. Some were somewhat redundant, so a little bit of wordsmithing. So we've got 10 questions that we would love to ask each of you candidates. Each person will get, will ask one question and each candidate will get to answer that. Uh, we will rotate among us who asks the questions and likewise will, will rotate among each of you so that not one person is always first or last in answering the questions for that. Um, after we go through those 10, if there's still uh, questions that would be beneficial for us in making our decision, we might have follow-up questions, but that's the general intent of it. For each question, you'll get a minute and a half to respond. And Rochelle is going to be our amazing timekeeper. It's why we've moved her up here. So it's a little hard, I know, because you're probably looking more at us. So if you see, you know, Rochelle and Josh, sorry, you might get a little bit of a, like, you know, something in your over, over towards your head. Um, no, 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 we're not going to do that, but um, to get a 15 second warning, which is the yellow piece of paper and then the orange one means uh, your time is up. So we ask you to try to, try to please abide by that. So at 29, one minute, 29 seconds, don't take a deep breath and try to go into a run-on sentence. With that. Okay, I believe with that, uh, council member Larson will let you ask the first question.
Great, thank you. Uh. Mayor.
And sorry, and we'll, we'll start with you, Mr. Cassidy. So we're starting on the side, same thing, go in parallel and then just move our way down.
Perfect. Okay, Chad. Uh, what we've got here to start with, just please introduce yourself. Share why you'd like, share why you would like to serve on the council and what beneficial skills you feel that you bring to the job.
So my name is Chad Cassidy. I live at 524 Sweetwater. I have an interest in helping. Uh, I've uh, retired from the Marine Corps in early 2021, went to gunsmithing school and have joined the community. For 20 years, I wasn't able to participate in any of this, although I had a, a job that was connected in a certain way to what you do here. I'd never lived in a place where I had the time or opportunity to come and see how things are run here. My background as a, uh, as a Marine for 20 years and some of the things that I did, perhaps, I don't know, but I would hope would help uh, that I might be able to contribute to the problem solving in some complex issues that y'all face. Um, so that's what I uh, hope that I could help with. Um, whether I'm up there or back there, either way, I would like to help. So that's why I'm here. Sure.
Um, I'm Carol Chidsey. I think most of all of you know me. I've been around here since 2004. Um, pretty involved in the community, served on a lot of county and state private boards, volunteer boards. I worked with you guys uh, both on building the community center. I was your fundraiser and then sadly for the Table Mountain, as you know, I helped with, with that and got it started. And being involved in those two in particular got me interested in serving the city. I haven't served a city organization. I've been in a couple countywide ones, but it's, um, I feel like it's time to look, look closer to home. Um, I was so impressed with how you all came together, particularly, I think only you're the ones that was on the city council for the chamber or for the community center, sorry, when we built that. I'm thinking, I don't think anybody else was, but um, that sure impressed me with how well and the job you guys do in coming together. So, and also I know you faced some kind of challenging times and will be facing some challenging times financially. And I feel I'm familiar dealing with a lot of that um, around the state and the county. Thanks.
Okay, so. I don't know how to operate this. I have a different microphone than everyone's.
Is your mic set here?
Take it, take it on.
It is on?
Pull it in a little closer to you, see if. Yeah, it's on.
Okay, just making sure.
Just pull it in closer to you, me too.
Old age microphone for a new age candidate. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so my name is Joseph Lopez. Um, I am a student who attends CWC in Riverton. Um, I have lived here for about five and a half years. Um, I, me and my mother, we came up here with the intent to be with family. Um, and the reason I would like to join the city council is because of my father instilled it within me, a very political mindset. Um, and so me and my brother and many of our family members like to pay attention to radio and um, online discourse about politics and, and it's always struck a chord with me. And so when I've been around the dinner table and talk, and hearing things about local politics, I got interested and I started discussing with it and. Um, I don't know, I just think it would be a good opportunity to learn more and to give another insight into, into the problems at city council.
Okay, thank, thank you, Joseph. Uh, Daniel.
Hi, my name is Daniel McLean and um, I'm a Wyoming native and born and raised in Cheyenne, moved up here in 2019 to be close to my wife's family. And um, I just want to serve my community for all the citizens of Lander and do the best that I can to represent them as best as I can. Um, what I would say sets me aside is my super diverse background. Left high school and uh, went to college for a little while and then uh, joined the workforce as a CNC programmer and a machinist for a little while, and then went back to finish my education and uh, graduated in 2016 and I've been a teacher ever since then. Finished my masters uh, in political science in 2019 and been teaching dual enrollment uh, poly sci courses and computer, most recently computer science at Riverton High School. Um, the big thing I would say is my attention to detail and my focus on efficiency. And moving forward, it's going to be really important that we be efficient and mindful how we're spending money in the city. One of the things that we focused on in my previous career at uh, Nortrak was uh, lean manufacturing and efficiency. And that was a, that was a big focus of what we did and hopefully I can bring those skills here to make us lean and efficient. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Daniel. Michael.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name's Michael Holland. I moved here in 2016, starting the outreach uh, Masters of Social Work Program through the University of Wyoming. I was lucky to be here um, and not be inundated with a lot of other folks looking for practicums. So I got some amazing internships in this community. Started at Fremont Counseling, worked at Four Washkee School for a little bit. And then once I got my degree, um, I started working at Fremont Counseling and I left Fremont uh, to start my own private practice in therapy. My office is just down the street. We share Lincoln. Um, and I think through the seven or so years of, of working as a therapist here, working with families and individuals, I've partnered with all entities of the county. And now that I've got a little bit more time, I'd like to dedicate my skillset and um, bring it to this council and help all of you make choices that you want to believe in and hope would sustain something. Uh, before I went to graduate school, I was a Peace Corps volunteer and spent three years doing this in Africa, developing sustainable projects and working with gatekeepers and stakeholders to learn. And I guess that's what I'm here to do.
Thank you.
Question number two. What do you understand the roles and responsibilities of a council member to be?
I think it is to be a representative of the people in the community, to be a listener and to convey the citizens' thoughts, represent them. Um, I also think it, it requires juggling an awful lot of stuff. Whether it be the infrastructure, which is a big thing, staff, which is a big thing. Um, certainly the changing budget and adjusting all that is a big thing and also prioritizing um, it. I too, as well as being the voice for the citizens, I think I can be the liaison to them or one of the seven of you, six of you. Um, liaison and really be explaining some of the stuff that you've done. I, I just sitting in a couple of meetings recently, I realized, wow, there's an awful lot more, you know, when someone's paving the street, that's not all they're doing. They're really looking at the whole picture and I think people need to realize that because I hear a lot of complaints about that, but they need to understand all those parts of it, so. That's all.
Thank you, Joseph.
Okay, so. What I believe it means to be a city council member is to listen to the people who will speak in your ward about their concerns involving projects that the city council is operating on. And then you're to essentially mix them together and form an opinion based on the majority is and what they're speaking, but to also, you know, not just reject um, input from the minority. You're supposed to try and mend them together in a way that works best and then present that on your, on your actions on the council. Um. It's, I don't think it's very complex, but I am more than willing to learn and understand more about what it means to be on city council while being on it. Hmm, that's it.
Thank you. Daniel.
Well, first and foremost, I think being uh, transparent and accountable to the citizens of Lander, not just of my ward, but to, to everyone and listening to them and uh, you know, knowing that there's going to be something new for me and uh, you know, you're going to have to take on that leadership role and have accountability. Uh, sometimes you're going to have to make tough decisions that are not going to sit well with some certain members of the community and just knowing that in advance and just being as open and accountable as you can and having that clear line of communication and not shutting people out. Uh, I think another big thing is, like I said, uh, budget concerns moving forward and being efficient and mindful about how we spend money. That's, that's a big thing with, uh, with me and I know that the city budget moving forward is going to look very different than it has the past few years. So. That's, that's, that's how I feel.
Thank you. Michael.
I would think it's to listen before I speak. Um, learn before I try and teach and understand the best I can before you make a decision. Um, I would think it's to sustain and preserve and protect really effective dialogue amongst council members and a really great relationship that allows the council to work well in a way that helps bring voices from each member's ward to the council.
Chad.
Thank you. Uh, just wrote a couple ideas down. Um, I think I agree with everything that's been said about representing families and individuals within the ward. You know, that, I think that's point number one that, that is inescapable. Uh, the second thing for me would be building rapport with, with all of you and then the folks that, that you represent, um, listening to them, building rapport with them, building trust. Um, I think the next thing for me, probably the, one of the most critical is uh, having the courage to make difficult decisions. Uh, we live in a resource restricted environment. Uh, we do today, we will in the future, and that creates complexity and challenges that uh, take courage to face. And that, it's easier to, to face those challenges after building rapport with others so that you can work on a team with them, even if you don't agree with them. That rapport allows you to argue with trust and from that position of trust, you can, you can win and you can lose, uh, but you trust your teammates, uh, and the people that you're working with and the people you're working for. Um, and then my last thing I would say is to probably uh, a role and responsibility or a core responsibility uh, for me would be to uh, to find peace and uh, with the people that you work with and to assume good intent in others. Uh, those are two things that for me are, are a critical component of, of being a good teammate and a good representative for the people in the ward. Thank you.
Councilmember Cox.
Uh, thank you, Mayor White. And thank you for allowing me to be on virtually as I travel for work. I really do appreciate it and thank you all for being here tonight. My question is, do you generally believe the city is headed in a good direction? Or is redirection needed? It's the first part. If the former, please explain. If the later, what changes would you suggest?
And Joseph, we'll start with you this time.
Okay. Um, so in my observation of how the um, city is operating, I think that for the most part, it is very much looking ahead and looking to plan for the future, and I agree with that. Um, at this time, without knowing further intimate specifics and details, I would think that we're about on the right track. Um, there are things that need to be clarified, things that need to be further explained. Um, especially as Daniel has pointed out, issues with the budget. Um, but other than, other than that, I've learned much about projects that the city is involved in and I agree with them and I don't see drastic change being necessary.
Uh, I think overall Lander's heading in a wonderful direction. Uh, I'm not going to come on the, on the council and suggest any sort of radical changes. Uh, my role is going to be, first off, uh, to be humble about that and know that I've got a lot to learn. And I'm going to surround myself with uh, yourselves already on the board and experts in the community to, to help me find that information out. I'm not an expert in everything and I don't know everything about Lander. And being open and willing to ask those questions is going to be critical to making sure that we're on the right track and maintain that, that proper heading. Uh, that being said, you know, I do think that budget concerns are going to be very key moving forward and talking to members of the community and getting their input is going to be critical as well. And I hope to be part of that discussion.
And Michael.
Yeah, I read through the, the master plan and I thought it was quite immense and aspirational. Um, audacious even, you know, it's, it's a pretty immaculate plan. Uh, how to do all of those things, go follow through with all those objectives. I mean, I suppose you can't eat an elephant all at once, right? Um, I suppose, I, I think, I think Lander is an amazing place. I grew up in Colorado and never thought about Wyoming that much, uh, even though it was about an hour north of me. And now I'm, I'm just here thinking I got away with something. Uh, my job wouldn't necessarily to, and the thing I haven't really tasked myself with is trying to change any particular thing. I just want to be available to contribute when the council or this community feels like I have something important to add. And I certainly agree with Daniel in that regard, you know? In a position to invest everything that I know and who I am, where the council needs it.
Thank you. Chad, we'll bring it back to you and then Carol.
Yes, ma'am. I think um, in order to answer that question on whether I think that it's generally moving in a good question, uh, good direction or a bad direction would be, I think it kind of would have to have a pretty long look at history in order to compare what we're dealing with now versus what's been in the past. And I don't have that. Um, from my exposure recently, within the last oh, six months or so, I see a group of talented people trying to juggle hard problems. Um, I see a lot of effort being put into that. Um, and from my read of it, there's an immense amount of challenges ahead. Um, infrastructure comes to mind immediately for me, probably as number one. Um, and I think that those are being tackled with some uh, some courage and some very uh, focused attention by the staff. So I'm very pleased with that. So uh, I think that I would say, you know, moving back to the initial question, I think generally they're moving in a good direction from what I've seen thus far. Um, in that the right attention is being put in the right place for the right reason. Um, so that's, that's my view of it currently.
I agree that I think you're headed in the right direction. The master plan is amazing. Um, I think that you all certainly in the whole city and the whole state are realizing there's going to be a tremendous change in the income that you have coming in to help bring some of those changes. And I think that um, it's going to come down to a wants versus needs, which is not going to. needs, which is not going to be some pleasant times than figuring out what parts of the budget need to be cut. I have been watching you and think you guys really do a good job of debating and thinking and reasoning when you make these decisions, and I'd be honored to be a part of that discussion. Thank you.
Great, thank you all. I have question number four, and this one, we'll start with you, Daniel. How would you represent a resident who approaches you about an issue but with whom you disagree?
That's a great question. I, I get these every day as a teacher, but I'll tell you, I enter every conversation that I have with another individual, assuming that I don't know everything, that there is something for me to learn from them. So, I might disagree with that person, but maybe by the end of that conversation, we can meet in a middle ground that is mutually beneficial. So just going into that conversation, knowing that ahead of time that there's, there's something that I could always learn from that person. There's something about Lander that this person might know, or how it affects the city, that I'm not aware of, and that's how I would approach that conversation, with great care and concern for, for that citizen. They're, they're voting members of the, in the ward and in the city, and ultimately we're responsible, and we have, have to have that due diligence to, to respect that.
Yeah, I, I would suppose the first priority would be to make sure that this person feels heard and understood. I, I suppose, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but my, my role as a council member wouldn't really be to insist on the folks in my ward or of the, the town understanding my perspective on something. I think that's the council's job to present kind of as a united front. It's not my job to make sure that I'm understood, it's my job to make sure that I understand the folks who are speaking to me, understand where it's coming from and why, and build that relationship. You know, my whole life professionally, since I left school, was and has been about building relationships with people. I've had a lot of practice, still a lot more practice needed. But I think that's actually one of the seminal reasons why I want to be here, is to be in a position where folks who might be generating energy for a fight find something different. And that's been kind of the history of my life and in my profession as a clinician. I've worked with folks who have not believed in me, and they've changed their mind.
Yes, ma'am. How would I represent a resident on which, on an issue which I disagree with? As I said in one of the other answers, I think firstly, you need to build rapport. You need to build a common understanding with them, ensure that they are heard. I, I agree with that completely. Probe their position in, in a respectful manner such that I can entirely understand it, whether I agree with it or not. Whether I agree with it or not is kind of inconsequential. That's not, it's not my role, I don't believe, to convince them of anything. My job is to listen to them so that I can then make their argument on behalf of them in a different venue with different people. So I need to be able to represent them, so I need to understand their argument and every element of their argument. If they ask me my opinion, I might share that, but that's not, it's not, it's not about me or about my opinion. It's a representation, so that's my, that would be my approach.
I have learned over the years that, as everybody said, it's more important to listen than anything. I've also known that my first reaction is to come back and counter with them, and I realize that that's, I've learned to just step back, take a day, think about it, process it, so I can get my emotions out of it and recognize what their feelings are and have thought of a good way to discuss it with them without my hindrance. I learned from your brother about that.
Great, thank you. I think we'll start with Michael on this one, if I'm correct. No, I'm sorry. Sorry, my apologies. Joe.
I don't know if this counts on my time yet, but can I ask a clarifying question? What are the details about this person? Like, do they represent a group? Is it an individual? Is he in my ward?
It's an individual, and they may or may not be in your ward.
Okay. Yeah. So, speaking of if he's, if, well, starting with if he's not, I feel it's important to, like some of my colleagues here have said, take his opinion in because you're trying to work with everybody on the city council to figure out what to do, and so one of you might represent him, and you can bring your, bring his concerns over and discuss it. Now, if he is part of my ward, I do believe that, as I am also a member of the ward, I should be able to have an opinion to voice. And disagreeing with him, I can present how I feel, but ultimately, my job is to, you know, represent the majority opinion, but to consolidate it and hopefully be able to make adjustments to the plan of action that can, that can hopefully appease both sides. But I firmly believe that, considering all of us are part of Ward Two, that we have to also have an opinion on matters that apply to us.
I apologize for jumping in there.
Okay.
Michael, for the fifth question, we'll start with you, and this one is similar. A constituent contacts you. They're frustrated that it's been three days since the 14-inch snowstorm, and their street, which is not a priority route, has not been plowed yet. How do you plan to respond to them? What do you do first, and then how do you respond to them?
First thing I would do is make sure, in anger, they don't attempt to drive through those firms, because when they're plowed, they settle, and the settling becomes quite concrete-like. So I validate and affirm for about an hour, hour and a half, and I suppose we'll assume that I know more about why through my role in the council. I gotta be honest, I don't know the true extent of all of the resources that we employ to try and manage the snow through the winter. And so I suppose the second thing I would do is I might give information about the people out there working their butts off. Because both can be true. We live in a pretty paradoxical place. We can be upset about the snow and the plowing situation, and we can also have a lot of respect for how hard people work to plow the snow. And I would look forward to that conversation. I think that would be a good way to unify. You know, conflicts with residents can always end in a stronger relationship, depending on how you play it.
Thank you. Mr. Cassidy.
Yes, ma'am. I wrote this one down as, I just abbreviated it to, a citizen reaches out to you with a criticism of city services. Figured that captured everything, and I'm sure you deal with that quite often. I think empathy at first, you know, telling them I understand, telling them I understand the circumstances, try to understand the nature of the problem as was described, you know, this is the resources we have, this is the time available, this is what it takes us to move that snow, these are the priorities, and the priorities are set for this reason. You know, and do you agree with me that you want the hospital to be available before your house? You know, I, you know, I would say that after building empathy, of course, right? You know, or building rapport and then having empathy with them, and try to just express to them a sense of community, you know, that we have to have priorities and that these are how they're set out, and that we will do the best that we can with the resources and the time that we have.
Thank you. Ms. Tidsey.
Well, first thing I think I would ask is, like Michael suggested, don't go out and get stuck, but then I would say right away, let me check with Lance and see what the schedule is and about how long it's going to be before you may get there. Now, as I was thinking about this, I got thinking, he's probably getting, Lance will be getting phone calls like crazy on a day like that, so maybe I would call you first and say, this is their address, could you give me some kind of timeline? And then I'd call them back with some information.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez.
Okay. So, obviously, my job is to take in the concerns of those of my ward, and if this person is upset about their road not being plowed despite not being priority, I would, I would not be able to answer off the cuff, at least I don't believe so, unless I had the information in front of me. Like, if I was in a conversation with one of my colleagues and we were discussing it, and then I was contacted by this person soon after, and it was fresh in my mind, then I could. But ultimately, it relies upon information that I cannot grant typically at the, at the time, and so I would need to consult with those more directly involved with the situation, in this case, the plows, and figure out the timeline if and when the road will be plowed, and then relay that back to the constituent.
Thank you. Mr. McLean.
Well, I think it's really important to, to listen to their concerns first and then to reach out to the city and find out exactly what the timeline is for that road to be plowed with that address, and then I think it's important to follow back up and say, and I'll reach back out to that citizen and say, it looks like this is the schedule for that road to be plowed, and, you know, letting them know that if it's not plowed by that time, then to give me a call back and I could see what's going on. And, you know, I'm, not that I can go out there and plow it myself, but at least give them some sort of idea and some timeframe of when that would, would happen. Now, if there's some sort of extenuating circumstance, like there was an elderly person and they were trapped in their house, and I would reach back out to someone in the city and say, hey, can we, can we divert away from this to get, you know, unless it's a priority route, but to, to get this citizen some, some relief.
Thank you.
How do you align with the will of Ward Two voters, as shown by the council members and other elected officials who won the majority in recent elections? Jake, may I reread that? Okay. How do you align with the will of Ward Two voters, as shown by the council members and other elected officials, who won the majority in recent elections?
Yes, sir. Politically, I don't know, but I can make some assumptions based on my interaction with, with Mrs. Stubble. She's in Ward Two. I've reached out to her on numerous occasions. We've had vigorous debates. We've agreed, we've disagreed. We've agreed to disagree. She's been exceptionally professional. She's knowledgeable. She, she's thorough. So, if we want to talk about political alignment by parties or things of those nature, I don't know. I don't know. But to answer your question, I think that the characteristics of that individual who represents Ward Two are characteristics that I appreciate as a Ward Two resident, and I would make an assumption, perhaps this is incorrect, but I would make an assumption that the people who voted for her voted for those personal characteristics over party. So my ability to agree with her or disagree with her, I think that that aligns quite well within Ward Two.
Well, I guess I know the Mayor White, who I would be replacing, and also Councilman Stubble. I agree with their, their philosophies. I think I've really gone along with them. I think, though, that, to me, when I get on the city council, I hope that I'm expected to look out for the well-being of the whole city, not just my ward. Whether it's up by the hospital or down on North Second, it's equally important to me, and I should have, have some knowledge about it all. I don't, I know where Ward Two is. You know, I know you've got the senior center, probably a lot more worried about that than, than maybe the hospital, but I think they're all important, and I, I don't think you can really separate that. I do think that I would be in line with what Mayor White believes, at least at this point. I'll probably learn more when I'm there and when I'm on the city council, and I don't think I'll be bringing anything to be rocking the boat too much. And I think currently, all of the city council looks out for the whole city, not just Ward One, Ward Two, or Ward Three. You're, you're all at work.
Okay, can the question be repeated? It was a long one.
Yes, of course. All right. How do you align with the will of Ward Two voters, as shown by the council members and other elected officials, who won the majority in the recent elections?
Okay. So, that's actually a lot better. I misunderstood in the beginning. I was like, were we given records? But from what I understand about Ms. White and Ms. Stubble, I believe from a political mindset, I'm a little varied from them, but, like I said, my, my position is to represent my ward, it is to represent the majority. And so, my personal feelings about, about issues aside, I can, of course, voice them as an independent citizen, but as a member of the council, it is my duty to represent and voice the opinion of the collective. And so I don't, I don't believe that would, our slight differences would hinder my ability to serve on the council.
Being a, being a student of political science, I would, I would be lying to you if I didn't, you know, have some sort of idea of the demographic and the makeup of Ward Two. But that being said, my duty in Ward Two is to represent everyone. I'm, if a, I almost said student, sorry. If a citizen came to me with a question or a concern, my question to them isn't going to be, well, what's your political affiliation, and did you vote for Julia or Missy in the last election? I'm going to listen to them equally as I would if they didn't vote for them. That doesn't matter to me. This is a nonpartisan position. I really, my concern is for the citizens of Lander as a whole and of Ward Two. That's it.
I guess this is making me think about outcome versus process. You know, political outcomes or outcomes of elections, they shift what's always been ongoing as a process, and that's how we're building our community together. So I suppose I would align with how everyone hopes this process would be, which is being inclusive and understanding of folks all having various needs, wants, and desires, and hopes for the community that they live in. I've always really believed in creating dialogue surrounding things that are hard to parse out as far as right, wrong, black, white, this or that sides of things. And frankly, I didn't know which ward I was in until someone told me I could be in this ward. I was in the ward of Lander up until a few weeks ago. That being said, understanding people's demographics as business owners or homeowners or families or couples or individuals, this has kind of been my bread and butter through my professional life, to understand how to communicate with them. That's what I'd do.
Question numbers. Question number seven, and I think you're on the hot seat now, Carol. Okay. What would you advocate?
What would you advocate, what would you advocate to be the top three to five priorities for the city to focus on in this coming fiscal year? And how would the council fund these given, how would the council fund these given the limited available budget? Nothing hard here, no, no softball questions.
Well, I think infrastructure has to happen. Uh, well, first of all, I'd say police, law enforcement and water and sewer are first mandatory things. And even then, and fire. Which is volunteer, I know, but I think you're going to have to really rank which streets need it most, which water lines are the rockiest, which, you know, for all of that. If we're incredibly fortunate and there is enough money to go towards those things and then have some surplus, I think I would look at expanding, expanding businesses in this community, I think is a big deal, it's complex, but big to bring, continue to bring people into the community. Serving on the Fremont County School District Number One Recreation Board and allocating money for that, which of course is going to get cut also. I do see that there's a tremendous interest and really the volunteer spirit is amazing every time I have their hearings every January. And I do think that you need to be looking at what kind of things make the people happy. But again, that comes, that comes a distant below police, water, sewer and roads. Thanks.
Okay, thanks Carol. Joseph?
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not fully aware of the entire agenda of the city council. I've seen, I've attended meetings and I've seen much of it. But um, it's all very, very complex and complicated. I suppose I would have to start at what's draining money the highest and make those assessments, um, which one should be priority? Which one should maybe be lessened? Off the top of my head, I know of the, um, of three projects, the project to um, build a new park in the north side of town, the project to deepen and widen the river south of the bridge and then and a further project past the bridge to mend the sides of the river leading out towards Riverton. Um, but I know that those are not the only projects that the council works on. Um, so like I said, I would have to assess the projects by order of what's consuming the most money and I would have to go from there.
Okay, thank you. Daniel?
Um, what a, what a tough question, right? Uh, top three for me though, pretty easy though, infrastructure, public safety and housing. Uh, let's start with that first one on infrastructure. Uh, it's a whole heck of a lot cheaper to maintain something than it is to fix it once it's broken. So I would advocate for being have been very diligent about having uh, maintenance schedules on really important infrastructure and maintaining them before they uh, go into a critical state of disrepair. And making sure that that gets done uh, properly and efficiently. And then uh, public safety, making sure that our police, fire and EMS are properly funded to provide those services for the citizens of Lander. We want to live in a, in a city where we feel that we have those services and that our investments are safe. And then the last one is housing. Uh, housing is becoming increasingly uh, difficult to attain for citizens of Lander. And you know, it's not really, uh, it, it's very difficult within the scope of city council to, you know, to tackle that issue, but I think we can do some strategic things to, to help make housing a little bit more accessible and affordable. That way we have a future. If we don't get families moving here, uh, Lander's future is not, is not going to look bright. And so we need to be able to make sure that those housing units are available for, for people to, to move into and stay here for the long run.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
I'm going to ask for the question to be repeated.
Sure.
Thank you.
What would you advocate to be the top three to five priorities? For the city to focus on in this coming fiscal year? And how would the council fund these given the limited, limited available funds?
Yeah, so I suppose this, it makes me think of Manzal's hierarchy and needs. People on the kind of interview line have talked about basic safety and security. That's a priority, but I would add a caveat to you know, police, fire and EMS. And I'd kind of be curious with the council about what we could do to address um, suicide prevention, substance use in our youth. Being able to bolster youth programming as a preventative measure. I've seen kind of firsthand the degree to which Fremont Counseling's crisis service is inundated all the time with six people running this thing. I think that needs to change. And in addition to that, housing, in addition to that, preserving what makes Lander so special, which has a lot to do with our parks and our wild spaces.
Okay, thank you. Chad?
Yes, sir. A two-part question there. What would I advocate to be the three to five priorities and how would I recommend or suggest they be funded? I think the first one, what would I advocate for is um, and the, the first step out the gate would be town halls. I, I wouldn't set priorities. I don't think it would be appropriate even for me to share priorities. I mean, I would, I would agree with everyone. Um, but I don't think that um, what, what my priorities would be, would be perhaps the appropriate answer. I think we would, the, the answer to your question would be to do town halls, find out whether people Ward Two want. Let them set those priorities. Let us engage in a dialogue with those people of Ward Two and refine those priorities and then get a yes, no, thumbs up from them on whether we clearly understand their priorities and then answer your question, which I can't do now. So that, I think that's the first answer to your two-part question for me. The second part uh, is in that town hall kind of space to really drive the point of austerity. We're in a, we're in a time of austerity and, and there's no way around that. Uh, the things that we want to do, we probably cannot afford. Uh, so it would be, it would be a back and forth dialogue on establishing those priorities with the people of Ward Two or the city at large. And to express to them, we want to do uh, Project X. Project X is going to cost this amount of money. Do it, does it remain as priority one? In the priorities that you've addressed to us as Ward representatives or city council members? So that's kind of my approach to how I would answer those two questions.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, bear with me because you're going to have, you can listen to this. This is a kind of a long one. It is no secret that's, that the city has aging infrastructure, water, sewer and roads that need to be repaired or replaced based on current pricing. It would cost over 400 millions to redo all of Lander's infrastructure. Yet only about 1.6 million is raised annually through optional one cents. How would you as a council member prioritize funding projects? And how would you explain the process to your constituents who want work done faster? Do you, do you have all that? Oh. Joseph?
Okay, so um, that is something that I have seen raised at more recent city halls. And that particularly along the lines of our roads and the puddles in them. I believe that there is a line of priorities and a, for lack of a better phrase, system of succession for each project that the city tackles and completes. I believe that priority of budget should go to the higher risk level factors. So aging, infrastructure, pipelines, um, both sewer and water, electrical power lines, et cetera. I believe that those can, can be and have been assessed by professionals and given a timetable on how long they have left. And I believe that depending on the results of those inquiries and assessments, that priority can be established and relayed to my constituents in a fair and reasonable manner.
Daniel, do you want me to read this one more time or do you? You're good? All right.
You know, clearly there's a, there's a big gap in the, in the budget and what needs to be spent to replace that. Now, granted, that's all the infrastructure of Lander. But I think we need to be very strategic and mindful about how we go about replacing an infrastructure and making sure that it's done right. And not done just fast and quick. Uh, making sure that that money is spent wisely and done correctly and in a mindful way. That's what's going to be key. And consulting with professionals, talking to the city engineer, talking to the people that work and do this stuff all the time. What areas need it the most and focusing on those areas uh, first and foremost. That's going to be important.
I heard a few different questions at the end of the question, right? There were like maybe three prongs to it. Could you repeat the maybe the last few sentences?
Okay, let's see. Well, you got the money part. I'll just read the whole thing, then you.
I got the money part, yeah.
It might be better to do that. It's no secret that, that the city has aging infrastructure, water, sewer and roads that need to be repaired and/or replaced based on current pricing. It would cost over $400 million to redo all of Lander's infrastructure. Yet only about 1.6 million is raised annually through the optional one cent. How would you as a council member prioritize funding projects? And how would you explain the process to constituents who want more work done faster?
Thank you. I would start by making it very transparent and known throughout our community, the problem. This discrepancy. Let it be known so that folks aren't under a certain impression. I think secondly, based on our community understanding the issues that we're under, you know, the problem that we face with revitalizing this community. And I suppose not being able to afford to. I think we could benefit from drawing from other ideas and contributions that the folks in this community could make. It's a hard thing, I think, for just half a dozen people to figure out. I like the idea of calling in additional professionals from the community who have maybe been in this situation before. Understand the systems that we have and approach it from a really strengths-based approach.
Yep, a three-part, three-part question there. Um, I think uh, this is probably one of the most significant challenges you face, right? I think first, uh, first step out the gate for me would be approach these problems, these difficult challenges with some humility. Recognize that you don't know, you're not the smartest person in the room and you don't know the entirety of the problem. Uh, I was very impressed with the city engineer in the last couple of meetings. And I would uh, in order to even answer question one and how to prioritize projects, I would try to corner that man, get in a pickup truck with him and spend a couple of days driving around everywhere. Um, and do the very best I can to understand the problem, even 90% of what he understands it. So humility with regards to Lance. Uh, how would you explain to the citizens, uh, again, as many opportunities to face-to-face with as many citizens of Ward Two as possible? Hopefully begging Lance to come with me in order to help them to understand what I've tried to understand from Lance. They, they can have opinions just like I can have opinions, but if they don't understand the problem, they, they cannot advise me as a representative on what to do either very accurately. So get with Lance. You know, have, have face-to-face meetings with the, the people of Ward Two and then try to represent them well.
I agree that you have an amazing engineer. Lance Hopkins has done a lot. You also have a great vice mayor that looks at some of the numbers and things like that that go in the background of it all. I was very impressed at the PowerPoint presentation he did a few weeks ago where he even went all the way back to Mick Wolf, having been mayor. And as you asked this question, you know, a great thing to do would be to go to the Rotary, Kiwanis, certainly the Senior Citizen Center. So, because they're complainers sometimes, I think. Even the Elks or whatever groups there are, as many, I mean, you learn so much and you've got him there to answer some of the, those questions. But of course you have to be there backing him up. So I think the first thing you really need to do is to learn from him. And, and I think sometimes it's good for um, him to, for Lance to be here getting questions from you because you're hearing from the constituents and he is the engineer. Most engineers, people's skills are not really their best. And um, you can be there and then be the liaison. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So my question is, having reasonably priced housing options for residents is a priority. What means would you want to see the city undertake to achieve this? Oh, you want me to repeat it? Okay. Having reasonably priced housing options for residents is a priority. What means would you want to see the city undertake to achieve this? And Daniel, that'll be you first up.
Well, I addressed this earlier when I spoke about uh, housing and um, I'll just say that I agree completely. This is a huge, huge need in our community. If we cannot provide affordable housing for community members, uh, Lander's does not have a bright future ahead of it. There's some significant challenges and I don't know exactly what the city can do within its scope, but you know, and I know there's been a lot of controversy about rezoning and high-density housing. I think there is a balance that we could strike that maintains the uh, unique feel of Lander, but also uh, provides more housing units for people to come into and enter the market freely. Like I said, if, if we don't do something about this, it's, it's not going to be good for the future of Lander. We have to provide reasonable housing for our citizens, especially those with young families. It's, it's critical, so.
I suppose this is one aspect of my life's experience that I really don't. I, I'm not going to try and pretend to come up with the perfect answer to that question. I do know that the spaces that we have currently remain valuable in any way, shape or form. If they don't have homes on it, if they've got kind of deteriorations happening with the homes that are there. Or, you know, brand new homes for folks. It's interesting, you know, we, I think housing is such an integral part to the economy building and I've noticed myself in my community, so many new people coming here and buying property, coming from places like Denver, Salt Lake, et cetera. Having affordable housing is essential, but also I think one of the ways that we could improve all of this is just making sure that Lander is a place where people want to live. all of this is just making sure that Lander is a place where people want to live. And if the city does what it can to own and have space that could otherwise go to other private entities, will have more options available to us in the future.
Yes, ma'am, an easy question, right? In the fall, in the winter, participating in some of the planning board meetings and watching you guys struggle courageously with this problem, I came away with a couple of things, a couple of my own observations that perhaps work well for me. I don't think this is a problem that can be solved. I think this is a problem that can be managed. I don't think it's a problem that can be solved. It's much too complex in my mind to be able to put your finger on and say, this is the solution, we follow these steps. So it's a managed problem, not a solved problem. I think that my understanding from the meetings in the last few months is that housing is not a local market, it's a national market. So local solutions perhaps are not going to address it the way that we would hope. It's not insulated in any way. So I really struggle internally with this question and the subsequent efforts to manage it. I don't think it's anything that the city council can solve on its own. I think that it's going to take significant messaging and discussion with the people of the city, the citizens of the city, to define expectations of what reasonably priced housing means and whether that's achievable in the economy in the United States in 2025, and then to manage that problem going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
This is kind of a really interesting one. And as people were talking, I was thinking, I've seen it on a couple of different levels. First of all, being with the first stop, I'm seeing homeless people, and looking for low-income housing is really tough. So affordable housing is a big, big deal. But also, I've seen how complex that is in getting, you know, like the housing headed out towards the industrial park, those apartments, and they have to all be licensed and everything. I know there's a big issue on whether you want to have the secondary home thing. I know it's got an acronym. Yeah, ADUs, thank you. You know, I talked to the building inspector here, because I have a garage, and I thought, wouldn't it be cool, I could put an apartment above it? That would work. Well, it's not connected to the house, so that wouldn't work. But I've also wondered a lot about going out, which I know would add a cost to it. But I'm looking at, one thing I've wondered is, this is probably an idea that's been tossed around a million times already, but behind the business park up there where Maven is, the state owns all that land, and I think the city owns a bunch of it, too. You know, I could walk out there a lot with my dog, and I thought, wow. I mean, there's a lot of land here, and you've probably got water and so we're going out that direction already. I've got a lot to learn. I have a lot of ideas, but I'm not sure they could all come fruition.
Thank you. Joseph?
Okay, so from my layman's interpretation of housing market, it is mostly out of our hands in city council. Once a citizen owns the land, they choose to sell it to whomever will buy it, and oftentimes, it ends up being people from out of town. And we can't just step in and stop the sale of that land because it's going to someone else who is either using the city as a tax haven or attempting to establish a rental home system. I know Riverton has many of those where a singular private citizen owns multiple properties and rents out to quite a few people, and that further drives up the cost. I think that at least a step that city council can make is doing what we can with the land we still have, and that would be building homes on land that doesn't have homes, and then prioritizing sale of those land plots to people who don't have a home. And I think that that would at least get the ball rolling on trying to have more entities that are private having the homes rather than conglomerates.
Thank you for that. Before we move on to the last question that we have formally planned, which is more of a closing question, I want to ask fellow council members if you have any additional questions you'd like to ask one or more candidates before we move on to closing.
Yeah, me too.
Any questions?
I think I do.
Okay.
Thanks, and I apologize for coming in and out. I think we've learned a lot from these questions about the experiences you've had and research and the style you bring. I'm curious, it's going to feel a little basic, but I want to go off the cuff here. Do you think you'd have fun being on council? And I'm not sure who's first, Mayor. You might know better than we do. Yeah. We disagree. Let's go with Michael. Do you think you'd have fun on council, and why?
I think I would. I enjoy learning. I enjoy learning about people. And what I enjoy most is learning how to work with people. I think what would make the council a lot of fun for me is seeing the micro experiences that I notice every day in my office with the members of our community, a single parent, a youth, a couple, a family, whatever it might be, you know. They contend with the immensity of life's problems, and they are trying to figure it out. And so many of those things are byproducts of a system. And if I had the opportunity to collaborate with a bunch of really energetic and courageous folks to try and create policy, procedure, a system that helps promote their livelihood, that's something that maybe would keep me here forever. Term one.
Well, there are none. So forever, you can say that. Mr. Cassidy?
I don't know that I would call it fun. I think there would be fun times, but I don't think that I would characterize it as fun. I think that it would be fulfilling. I think in my adult life, I spent 20 years perhaps giving more than I took from society. And for the last couple of years, that's inverted a little bit. There's not a place in my life currently where I'm able to give like I did in my military career. So I think that learning, being challenged, facing difficult conversations, you know, working hard towards achieving the best possible outcome, that's fulfillment. And perhaps you get satisfaction and happiness out of that. And again, there'll be fun times, there'll be jokes that'll come up, and there'll be good memories, but it'll be more fulfilling than fun for me.
I think it would be fun. I'm retired now, I've got the time. I've served on enough county and statewide and private boards. And I enjoy working with people and having challenges and needing to work on finding a solution with a team. Yeah, I've had a lot of fun with it, and it seems like I like the challenges, and I think you guys do a great job of working together, and I'd like to join it. Thanks.
Thanks. Mr. Lopez?
So from my understanding of it being fun is that I'm very passionate about the political process. I find it immensely entertaining, not in the humorous way, but it's very engaging. And I feel there is a lot to learn from the experience. And I feel that it would be a very strong mental exercise for me to assess the problems that this community faces and try and hash out agreements and ways to move forward. Even though I am a student and even though I do work part-time, after looking over the responsibilities of a council member, I do believe that it is well within my ability to serve on the council.
Thank you. Mr. McLean?
You know, I think it comes down to doing the work that is going to make Lander the best place that it can be for all the citizens of Lander. What could be more fun than that, right? You know, working with the city, working with the people, and doing what is in our best ability to make this a great place for everyone. I think it'd be awesome. So I would look forward very much to being a part of that and being part of that discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions you want to ask before we go to our wrap-up? Okay, in that case, so question number 10, thanks for hanging in there. So at this point, we would welcome a short closing statement about your candidacy. Is there anything else you'd like to add about your vision for Lander or your priorities for Ward II? And Chad, we'll start with you on this end.
First off, I'd like to say thank you for letting all of us show up and participate in this. I haven't, like I said earlier, I haven't been able to do this in my adult life, and I feel like it's a responsibility to participate and to understand, to try to understand. And if you have the spare capacity, maybe not the talent, but if you have the spare capacity to help, you help, you know? And if you have the talent, then that's just, that makes it a little bit better for everybody. I feel like I have the spare capacity. I hope that my adult career of being in the military would bring some talent, some skill. And I look forward to the outcome, however it might turn out. I'll be up there or in the back here in one way or another. You know, and I would like to help. There's some significant challenges ahead, I think, for everybody, and I think that we're all in the boat together. Thank you.
Now that I have the time, that I can really dedicate myself to this, I would really look forward to working with you guys to meet some of these challenges. I feel really fortunate that I've worked with groups before that have had some kind of tough political decisions, not elected boards, but certainly the museum has come under fire quite a bit when I was on it, and the rec board, we always have people wanting what they don't get and things like that. And I've learned a lot about that, and I would just find this to be like one step further than those. Those are sort of small, small problems that we can get resolved, hopefully. But this one is more of the whole community. I would be honored to be a part of working on that. Thanks.
I apologize. Can you repeat that one more time? Of course. At this point, we'd welcome a short closing statement about your candidacy. Is there anything else you'd like to add about your vision for Lander or your priorities for Ward II?
Okay, so closing statement about the candidacy. Like I said, I'm a political enthusiast, but also a political learner. And I believe that with it being such a short term before the next election, that this is the ideal place for someone like me who has not run for or established public office before. I do think that it will be a very educational experience to be more in-depthly involved in the runnings of a city and becoming involved in the community as a whole. And if you'll have me, I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
And thank you. Daniel?
First off, I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity to come here and allow me to be part of this process. I really appreciate it, and I'd like to give kudos to you guys up here. It takes some guts to put yourself out there and to be part of public scrutiny. And it's hard to do, and I thank you for your willingness to do that as well. I guess I would just highlight my willingness and openness to serve my community. And that's my core value and my core reason for running and putting my name out there is to serve my community. And I thank you again.
Thank you for that. Michael? So if the theme then of our city is this amazing entity that persists through some pretty adversarial circumstances in this environment, you know, one thing that I think really stood out from the master plan is that the people of Lander will show up for this place in spades. And you guys do it all the time, and I appreciate that, and thank you. I think what maybe could set me apart, especially like what Joe mentioned about the short term, is I suppose you're looking at all of us and wondering, you know, whose knowledge do you want to tap into? Who might be able to bring a contribution that could help the council, help the city over the long term? Or the short-term navigation of pretty immense challenges. But I feel extremely inspired by the master plan, and I'm in the business every day of helping people focus on what they can do, where the solutions do exist, what are the resources available, and what are the supports that are there? And, you know, I would savor the chance to try and bring everything that I've learned doing this in far distant countries, in other languages, in cultures totally separate than mine, and contribute how I could. Thank you. I appreciate that. Y'all have given us so much to think about. Oh, my goodness. Again, I want to say thank you to each of you for being willing to put yourself forward in general and then also showing up here tonight. Again, we know the challenge of doing that, and we can appreciate the courage and dedication that it takes for you to do that. The process from here is that a week from today, we will vote as a council member for one of you folks to serve. I think I can easily speak for all of us in saying we would be honored to serve with any one of you, and it's going to be a hard decision. Unfortunately, there's only one spot. We're going to be doing a lot of head scratching. I'm sure you noticed all of us diligently taking notes. You saw a lot of the tops of our heads here in our meeting, and thank you for giving us such thoughtful answers in response to our questions for that. As noted, unfortunately, there is only one council seat, although there are many opportunities to serve in Lander. So if you're not the person who's selected for council, please do think about whether it's serving on one of the city boards. There's any number of other opportunities locally and in the county as well. There's a number of nonprofits, all of whom would be delighted to have dedicated efforts of folks like yourselves for that. So again, thank you very, very much for being here, for sharing your thoughts, for being willing to step forward and serve this town that we all love very much. With that, I believe we will end the meeting. Thank you again.